Is that on now?
It's on. On.
We should leave it on even when we're not talking?
Well, kia ora koutou. Good morning. Welcome to the Wellington District Licensing Committee. Nua reira tena koutou katoa. Greetings to all. Let me start by introducing the committee. My name is Rachel Palu. I'm the person or member chairing the committee this morning. And I'll start with what is my right with our member Juliet Pilpot, who I have here and I'm not quite sure visually how things have been seen. But and let me know if anything doesn't make sense or you can't hear me. And to my left, I have Simon.
Tendeta.
Tendeta, thank you. And we have today's district licensing committee. Now, what I would like to do is just confirm who we have attending this morning. So I understand that for the applicant, we have Mr. Young.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair members. I'm here. My client, well, the directors of the applicant, Bine Jaggett and his wife, Pooja Jane, they logged in, but their camera didn't work, so they're just restarting their computer and we'll log in again. And they'll be present together via Teams, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. Would you like us to pause while we let them do that so they don't miss out? Or should we just finish our introductions and then we'll just wait?
I think we can continue the introductions, Madam Chair, if that moves things along a little.
Okay, all right. So in the room here, we have somebody from the police.
Good morning. Senior Sergeant Shane Benj. As a result of receiving the memo, although police have not opposed the application, I thought it appropriate with some of the information that the committee police attend.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, sorry, Mr. Jaggett and his wife, Ms. Jane, have just come online. You will see them on your screen. So thankfully, the camera's working.
I can thank you. Kia ora. Mr. Jaggett and is it Ms. Jane?
Ms. Jane, yeah.
Thank you. For I've just introduced myself. I'm Rachel Palu, the member chairing the licensing committee this morning. And we have on our committee this morning, I have Juliet Pilpot. And I also have Simon Tendeta as well. So we're just introducing ourselves. We've heard from your council. We have Sergeant Shane Benj, who is here for the police. And we also have online the licensing inspector, Joanne Burt, I can see.
Yes, thank you.
And that looks like it in terms of parties. And so and then we have our secretary, Gwen Mans. And we also have someone else who is assisting Mike in the room as well. Okay, so as you will have read in the memorandum that or the minute that was filed on came out on Monday, the purpose of today's hearing is to go over some of the information that's been filed and just clarify some of that information. And it's anticipated that this hearing probably won't take very long. And in terms of how the hearing will proceed this morning, to start with, I propose to hear from you, Mr. Young, maybe just give us an overview of the applicant's application. And then we will hear from Mr. Jaggett, who has filed a statement and perhaps answer some of the queries that have been raised in the minutes earlier this week. And then that will probably largely comprise the hearing, although I appreciate that we have Sergeant Shane Benj here and there might be some questions that the committee might have. And also for the licensing inspector as well. So that's roughly how we expect to proceed. And if anything else crops up, we will address that as we go through. I'm just checking, Gwen, was there anybody from the medical officer of health that was?
Yeah, I think it's the medical officer of health's office sitting on the top right of my screen.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have?
I see a table of people. Yes. Let me find out who we have sitting around the table. It might it looks like we might have an audio problem.
There you go, yeah. They'd like to introduce themselves.
Yes. So for the medical officer of health, can you tell me who we have participating this morning? Okay, hang on. We'll just see if we can address whatever the issue was with that.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So it's Julie Blyth, Alcohol Regulatory Officer. We have Stephen Vega, Alcohol Regulatory Officer. Daniel McDonald, also Alcohol Regulatory Officer, and Chris Speightman.
Okay, thank you. I did I haven't I should also also mention, as noted in the minute, that there is an opportunity for the applicant to file any further written statement or written closing submission if anything out of this morning's hearing transpires that you feel you haven't addressed. And there is always the opportunity to file a closing submission anyway.
Just on that, Madam Chair, can I just check something? I filed some submissions in a supplementary statement of evidence last night around six o'clock. And in the past, the email my emails have been embargoed at Wellington City Council. Do you have that material?
Now, I can see the secretary shaking her head no. So no, I haven't seen it at all. And I don't know how what the issue was with receiving emails.
Mr. Young's emails are quarantined in our IT system. I'll have to just try and see if I can get that for you. It could not be a might not be a two-minute fix, though.
If it assists, that was sent at 6:26pm. I sent it to Alcohol AHPO at Wellington, so I don't know if Senior Sergeant Benj received it and Andrea Boston at the Health Regional Health Valley District Health Board, HVDHB, and Ms. Burt. And I know, I think Ms. Burt's not been receiving my emails in the past too. So to give you some context, Madam Chair, Mr. Jaggett worked on a brief of evidence to respond to the various questions. And I've done a brief opening that deals with the history and a little bit around objections that I may not bother presenting, given your explanation of how the hearing will run.
Given that you have filed that and we don't seem to have it at the moment, I'm wondering if we can take the statements that have been filed or the statement that has been filed so far as read. And we can also take the inspector's report as read. And I'm thinking maybe if Mr. Jaggett reads out the more recent statement that was filed last night. And Mr. Young, you're welcome to read out whatever the submission was or speak to it or whatever you think is going to be useful at this point.
I found it.
If I can interrupt, it's Joanne speaking. I have received it, so I'm more than happy to forward that on to Gwen if that was if that's helpful.
Thanks, Jo. I just found it.
Okay, apparently it's being now recovered and it will just be a matter of making its way through to us. But just to keep going. And we obviously haven't had the chance to read it prior. So perhaps if at least the statements read out, then that would be useful for us to consider it through the course of the hearing as well. Okay, so Mr. Young, if you would like to start by giving us an overview or opening submission, whatever your preference is there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little warning, I'm at home in my home office. I forgot today my daughter is not at school. She's here, but she's independent and working online, but she may I've told her she can't pop in. But if she does, I apologize for that and I'll quickly carry her away. Mr. Jaggett expected he would need to read his more recent statement. It has some attachments. So if there was the opportunity to print it, have it in front of you when he reads it, that might help. My submission, I don't think you need it in front of you. What I focused on was just to go back through the applications. And in the 2015 application, I just note there were no public objections. The MOH initially opposed the application, but subsequently withdrew its opposition. And originally, the police had saw us a 9pm closing and sub and they subsequently augmented that to refer to a concern around single sales. So those were the issues live in 2015. And and that was from Sergeant or Constable Damien Rupera Davies at that stage engaged with my client to talk about his concerns in Kilburni. And following discussions with the police, an agreed position was reached in 2015. And the conditions that were agreed were a slight reduction in trading hours to 10am. Sorry, to 10pm Sunday to Thursday and 10:30pm Friday and Saturday at any day preceding a public holiday. And then you also had the condition about external advertising that Ms. Burt refers to in her report, and that's continued through. And then for undertakings, I have to concede that the then chair didn't accept my submissions around the scope of conditions. And with the benefit of time, it appears he was probably right about that or was right about that because we're seeing conditions around pricing being upheld by the authority in a Fitianga decision. But the undertakings where the company would not sell single serves of RTBs, or sell light spirits, not sell single shots and not sell single serves, actually of mainstream beer under 500ml. Now, I can confirm now, Madam Chair, response to one of your questions. The conditions remain. We haven't sought any variation of conditions. And my client confirms the undertakings are given again because we do need to renew those and apologize for their oversight. But those undertakings are given again and there's no intention to depart from the current operation since that 2015 hearing. I just do note that in terms of the previous license hours in 2015, they did enable Ocean Limited to trade till 11pm. That's my recollection at the time that there was a bit of push and shove from the industry and the agencies about whether 9pm closing should be applied more widely. And we're also we were in the middle of the Wellington LAP decision at that time. So there were discussions around certainly the inner city suburbs and the CBD about off-licensed hours. And the solution that was reached with Kilburni was one that was considered appropriate to its circumstances. And then all I say in terms of 2018, the renewal, the same undertakings were proffered and the same conditions applied. The only slight variation was in 2015, there was a condition that said within three months, there would be a point of sale system that had certain steps to enter age ID. You'll see that condition that's existing. That changed to just saying you will have a system because it was in place by 2018 and effectively maintain that system. And my client has done that, so they have no issues at all with maintaining those conditions. Madam Chair, I have some missions on amenity and alcohol-related harm. What I do note is in your minute, and I needed to just need to press this by the context, at least from the applicant's perspective, is there was a concern that the objectors' concerns had not been resolved. I guess putting my point on it, my client accepts that there will always be a risk of harm, risk of issues, and they need to be alert to it. They didn't accept the characterization of their store nor the locality that was in those submission in those objections, I should say. And I just observed that the objections from the by the the Fahertes, Baetis, was generalized and unformulated, in my view. No specific events, just a very broad allegation of a harm or an issue. And also in terms of the resolution proffered by them, it was inconsistent in my submission because the claimed problems were more daytime problems. If they refer to people drinking during the day and boys in school uniform. Now, I'd say the boy could be in school uniform later at night, but more likely after school. But the solution was to reduce trading hours to 7pm, which didn't seem to really respond to the alleged issue in any case. And again, Ms. Wu's objection in my submission was unformulated and tellingly in my submission because it was a little more inflammatory talking about using phrases like drunken fighting. No suggestion that she had contacted police or had observed an incident which required her to police that you might see an objection. So that's the context in which my client has to try and respond or understand concerns raised. I've addressed a more about to be given to objections, Madam Chair, but you'll be familiar with them. It's probably not on point because you're really looking to satisfy yourself and your members of how things are going. And so I'll part those submissions. But I do just say, in relation to alcohol harm, it is submitted that Ocean Limited has an established record of seeking to minimize harm. It engaged with the police in 2015 and developed a bespoke set of conditions and undertakings designed to target and minimize the issues raised at that time. Having failed a CPO, it adopted a new point of sale system and has not had another failure. It actively supported a liquor ban in the area. And in my submission, Madam Chair, importantly, this is not a case of a licensee that is resistant to change and improvement. It's quite the opposite. And the key things that I think you'll see in Mr. Jaggett's evidence, which we've seen in supplementary evidence, that the liquor ban has worked. And in the supplementary evidence, Mr. Jaggett will also say that Kilburni has changed and evolved from a place where there may have been student or younger renters to more families in recent times. He'll also now show that he has learned from his mistakes and they failed a CPO in 2015 and they responded to that issue. Importantly, Madam Chair, the applicant lives one kilometer from the store. So they are a part of this community. Their children or their child attends the local school. They care about Kilburni. They're not an Anderson T licensee. They are part of the community. And then he understands his obligations under the Act. So I'll finish the evidence. Madam Chair, thank God I want to go on. I know you want to get to the evidence and members. But that's just a sort of summary of where my client comes from and looking to respond to the minute. But that's just a sort of summary of where my client comes from and looking to respond to the minute and looking to understand what it could perhaps do or what is of interest to the committee. So Madam Chair, have you now got a copy of my opening submissions in front of you?
Sorry, I forgot to turn my microphone on. I don't know if you heard any of that.
Oh, I didn't hear anything, sorry.
Sorry. I'll go back. Yes, I do have, I think, your written submissions, Mr Young, that you've just outlined to us. They're about six pages long and they're dated yesterday.
Yes, and look, I've sort of spoken to them and interpolated and left parts out, so it's a summary. And as I said, I didn't really want to get into the law around objections and weight or whatever because I don't think we need to go there yet. And I'm grateful for the indication that if necessary, I can provide a closing. The only additional comment I'd make, I've briefed my client on a hearing, an ABL hearing, and to do their best and answer questions, but given we're in different rooms, it's a little difficult. And I have said to them, if they do get lost or confused and they wanted to consult with me, with your indulgence, we might be able to step away for two minutes just so I could understand. Provided, of course, you don't feel compromises, questioning or anything like that. But I think we should be okay.
Yes, no, Miss Young, that sounds completely reasonable. I do appreciate that. We are in different places at the moment and we do have to work around this type of hearing, which is partially online and partially in person. So if there is anything that does crop up, let me know and we can certainly deal with it and figure out how best to work around it.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr Jaggit, if perhaps you would like to maybe go over your supplementary statement of evidence. Although if you really do want to start with the first statement of evidence that was filed several weeks ago, then you're welcome to read through that too. If you prefer. I'm just being asked if we need to swear you in. And it's not completely necessary in every hearing, but I think we will follow the practice that we usually do. And we will do that. And I'm in your hands, Gwen, as to how you're going to do that.
I have a suggestion if it helps because I haven't told my client to have a Bible in the room. But if you just do the affirmation.
We could do an affirmation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think about that.
Yes, and maybe if I'll ask the secretary to read out the affirmation and then, Mr Jaggit, if you can just confirm whether you affirm that or not.
Mr Jaggit, could you just clearly state your name?
Bine Jaggit.
Do you solemnly and sincerely and truthfully declare and affirm that the evidence you're about to give touching the matters before this committee will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, Mr Jaggit, can I suggest, following on from the chair's introduction, that you just read your supplementary statement because the committee has read your first statement?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to give my introduction. My name is Bine Jaggit. My background and experience are set out in my primary statement of evidence dated 18th February 2022. In addition, I would like to add that, that we live locally in Kilburny. Our house is less than one kilometre away from the shop. We are parents. We would like to keep the community safe for our family too. We would never encourage any intoxication and illegal alcohol consumption in the area. We are a part of this community. My evidence responds to the committee's minute dated 7th March 2022. Going to incident, in the past, there were incidents with homeless people drinking in public. They would sometimes come to our store. However, they mostly sat outside the supermarket and asked people for money. Since the liquor ban, these incidents are very rare. Attached and marked A are records of incident dating back to March 2021. There have been six recorded incidents. They mostly relate to inappropriate behaviour or ID. We keep our incident records in the off-licensed premises toolkit for bottle stores, folder which was given, which was provided by HPA. A picture of the folder is attached and marked B. We have been very strict with IDs since we failed a controlled purchase operation in 2015. And I think people know that we are strict, so they don't try to buy from us. We have been trading for over 10 years now. We know nearly all our customers and their families. Most of them are locals. The local kids have grown up in front of us. We think that this is another reason why we don't see many issues with our regular customers. Most of our customers are regulars. We have also seen Kilburny change. House prices and rents have gone up. There are families in the area and fewer students or younger people. I think there is another reason why we don't have many issues with intoxication now. Alcohol-related harm, the main issue with alcohol-related harm in the area concerned the homeless people drinking on the street. Many of these people came from Newtown because there was already a liquor ban there from 2010. I can recall that vans used to drop these people off in Kilburny in the morning. We would monitor their behaviour. We would not serve any intoxicated person or those that we saw drinking in public. We would not serve intoxicated people. If they could not get alcohol from us, they would try and purchase it at the supermarket. They would often purchase beer or wine from the supermarket before my store opened. I also think they were taking other substances some of the time. As noted above, the liquor ban has been very successful. The people consuming alcohol in public were a small group, around five to 10, but it was very visible. They don't come to Kilburny now. We offered the undertaking in 2015 to discourage these people using our store following discussion with the police about specific issue in Kilburny. Light spirits are cheap and attractive to people with limited money. Single shots and RTDs are sometimes purchased for immediate consumption. We agreed that these limitations could help reduce the public drinking issue, so we offered them. However, we were always in favour of a liquor ban and we thought that that would be the most effective way to address this issue. We do not serve anyone that we know has been drinking in public and we refuse service by saying there is a liquor ban. However, this is very rare now. In the last year or so, we would refuse service maybe twice in six months for intoxication. I discussed this with my staff because we didn't see intoxication mentioned in the incident book. They say it's very rare, which is my experience too. Most customers are purchasing alcohol for consumption later when they come to the store. It was only the people that used to drink in public that could become intoxicated and try to purchase more. We have asked our staff to make sure the record refusal of service for intoxication in the incident book. Promotion of responsible alcohol consumption, we have done in-store promotion where we provide a free sample of zero alcohol beer so that the customer could get to try the product. We have increased the visibility and range of zero alcohol, low alcohol products within the store and asked the supplier to keep us up to date with the new products. Our latest addition to our range is 10 L0. Hours of operation and staff roster, a standard roster for the week is attached and marked C. I note that both my wife and I work at the store in addition to the staff listed in my first statement of evidence. Condition and undertakings. We are happy to continue with the undertakings given in 2015 and the condition imposed in 2018. The inspector reports. And conclusion, I consider that the liquor ban has been very effective in resolving previous issue with drinking in public. I seek that my licence be renewed as sought in the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Jaggit. That statement helpfully covers the queries that have been raised in the minute and some of the queries that came out of the information that was filed. In terms of your first-hand, I guess, experience of customers that come into the bottle store. And it is acknowledged that there are vulnerable people who are in the area and that you have, most of your customers are regular. Those that are sort of the vulnerable people that may have come from Newtown or wherever it is that they come from and have, by the looks of it, caused some issues in the area, which you've acknowledged and you say has been addressed by the liquor ban. Are they some of the regular customers that you have, that you're aware of or not?
Madam Chair, there are some homeless people still in Kilburny, but those are, they used to be in Kilburny before 2015. And sometimes they are on the street, but they are not harmful or hardly they consume alcohol in public these days. And we always keep an eye on the street and on this local area, what's happening. If we see anyone or if we think he might be drinking in public. So we know, we have no obligation to serve that person, even if that person is sober.
Okay. And so how do you manage that? I mean, are they regular customers? And I appreciate that you monitor them, which is obviously one way of managing. Making sure that you aren't adding to the alcohol-related harm in the area. And I appreciate that you're not causing the underlying problem. But there will be people, by the sounds of it, in the area who are coming in wanting to purchase alcohol. During it, who may come in while your bottle store is open. And I'm just wondering, out of the people outside who are vulnerable, how many of them are regular customers? And if there are, it sounds to me from what you're saying, Mr Jaggit, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they may be served, but if they are, if there are any difficulties, if there's any intoxication, then you are very quick to manage that and not serve people that may be impaired by alcohol. Would that be a fair summary?
Yes, we have done that in past and if, since the liquor ban, we had worked with the Kilburny Business Network Committee and we have done the awareness. And each and every customer, like we have told them, okay, this is a liquor ban area now. Now you cannot consume alcohol in public. And if we see that, then we won't be able to serve you. So that's how we have minimised the consumption of our regular customers who used to drink in public and now they are not.
Okay.
And again, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna see if any of the committee members have any questions. Let me start with you, Simon. Questions?
Yes, Mr Jaggit, thank you for the information you've given. Excuse me. I wonder if you could explain, how would you characterise the street scene in Kilburny in the area local to your shop at the moment? How would you describe it every day and in the evenings?
Madam Chair, just quickly before Mr Jaggit answered, it's not an issue. But I certainly can't see the member and I don't know that Mr Jaggit can, but he can certainly hear, we can hear him fine. But just to say we can't see you on the screen at the moment.
Okay.
I don't think it causes an issue.
You're not missing anything by not seeing me.
Sorry, it was just to give you our context.
Thank you for that. I actually wasn't aware of that. I don't know what the ranges of the.
We can see that two chairs, either side of you, Madam Chair, that is probably just half a metre either side of your stand.
See me now if I move along?
Right.
I can see the water jug. Is that the same, is that the same for you, Bine? You can just see the chair palu but not the members?
I can see all the members, yes, I can see.
Oh, that's fine. If you can, I can't, so it doesn't, that's fine, doesn't bother me.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure why there's a difference. But look, if you don't want to see us, because I think that is useful, then let us know and we can shuffle along, I guess, a bit and so that it is more visible. Let me just check for the medical officer of health team. Who are you able to see?
We can now see the whole committee?
Ah, right. Okay. So Emma's Bert, is that the same for you?
No, it's not. I can see yourself and I can see Juliette and that's it.
Ah, okay, right. We're going to shuffle.
Madam Chair, it's not an issue for me. I'm trying to play with these gallery settings without losing connection and trying to be too tricky. But I'm comfortable as you are set up, so please don't do it on my account.
Okay, all right. I think they might be able to see you, Juliette, but let's carry on. Sorry, Simon.
My apologies.
Mr Jaggit, would you like me to repeat the question or are you okay? It was basically just, how would you describe the sort of street scene, both daytime and evening, around your shop and in Kilburny generally?
Okay, so to answer your question, sir, before 2015 or before liquor ban, I would say, Kilburny was entirely a different, you know, like suburb. Now it's entirely a different suburb and it's, it's one of the beautiful suburb, I would say, in eastern suburb. And as we submitted in a evidence of statement that Kilburny, the demographic has changed what it used to be in 2015 and what is now at the moment, we've got all the amenities. And in regards to the vulnerable people who used to sit outside the supermarket or outside the bench in front of our store, those have been reduced. There are still some four or five, if I'm not wrong, homeless people. They do live in Kilburny, but they are harmless. They are not harmful. And I would say, in my words, I would say it's one of the beautiful community, beautiful suburb and a safe place to trade or live.
Okay, thank you. I was just, is it any different in the evenings? Are there many people out in the evenings?
No. Yeah. No, sir.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Because I have been staying in Kilburny for more than 10 years now. I have seen, I have known this place for the last 10 years. My kids, they have gone to the Kindy just right next to the post shop, so I'm quite familiar with this area. And every day I just go and have a look at the area because I am a part of this community and it's my responsibility to keep my community safe.
Thank you, Mr Jaggit. I think those are all the questions from Mr Tendita. Juliette, have you got any questions?
Good morning, Mr Jaggit. I just wanted to ask a quick question just about the roster that you provided at the back of your supplementary statement. Thank you for that. I was wondering if I could ask you just to confirm an assumption that I've made, which is obviously in these strange times that we live in, businesses need to cover for things like illness and staff needing to be away. I presume that there's a, well, perhaps you can tell us if there is a system in place for making sure that there is an available duty manager when, if, say, staff were circled or alternatively if they're for breaks and for managing the store when the people who are rostered on can't be in the store.
To answer that question, man, all our staffs are very flexible and we always make. and we always make sure that there should be a duty manager available throughout the operation of the trading. And we make sure, for example, if I have to leave the shop or if any of my staff is sick or ill. So we make sure and we communicate with each other and whoever duty manager is available. Or for example, if they need to start early, then they are rostered shift. They are quite flexible and that's how we have been operating.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Thank you.
Just another question for me that arises out of that and I'm just, as you'll appreciate, we've only just received this roster during this hearing. In terms of the roster and it's in blue, so I'm just trying to read it. My understanding is that the duty manager is you, Mr Jaggett. No, yes, you for on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Madam Chair, it's not easy to read and I'll just, on Friday and Sunday, it's nickel.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. Okay, so Monday to Thursday from 10 o'clock. On Monday, Tuesday to half past five, it's you, Mr Jaggett, that is the duty manager, so all day largely. And then Wednesday, Thursday, it's you for till lunchtime.
Yes, ma'am.
And on those days, the duty manager is your, your wife after you have finished. And then that changes on Wednesday, Thursday and the other staff are involved more on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, the weekend, which I imagine might be a bit busier as well. So there's the duty manager rostered for those hours. In terms of support staff assisting, what is the, what are, who are the other, how many other support staff are there during various times when noted in your roster here? There are, I think, on Friday between 2:30 and 10:30, there's two people rostered on by the looks of it. But in terms of other hours through the week, who else is rostered on?
Can you see the extra staff column on the bottom?
Yes.
It should be the purple color. So this is the extra staff, madam.
Okay. Okay, so those on those days during those, the hours identified, there's an extra staff member. So when I'm, I'm guessing during hours where it's not as busy and a bit lighter, you've got the duty manager on and then that duty manager is assisted in the hours identified in the extra staff column.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on Monday, all day long, it's just one person largely in the bottle store?
Yeah, because Monday and Sunday, those are the quietest day and I personally be available in the shop so that I can make the sales rep and I can plan for the week, I can place the order. And that's how like, so that's why one staff, one duty manager, they can, they can easily handle. And that is the reason why I'm starting on Monday from 10 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. during the business hours.
Okay, and so if you need a break at all during that day, how does that, how does that work?
Break means suppose if I need to go to the restroom, so we just close the shop and I just go to the restroom and lunch and all like to be honest, I don't eat that much, but yeah, in the shop, I just have drinks or sandwich or pie, that's it, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. You're saying if you need to leave, you close the shop?
Yes, madam, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, I think those are all the questions that the committee has. We do have some other agencies, they haven't filed any evidence, but they will have a right to ask questions if they have any. Let me see if Sergeant Benj, let's start with you. Have you got any questions that you wish to ask?
Just a couple of things that has now been raised by Mr Jaggett, so I'll just ask him to clarify because you've now raised in regards to the roster and that. Could you just clarify though, in December of 20, you were issued an infringement for not having a duty manager on premise? The situation, would you like to just explain that to the, to the committee so that they are aware of the circumstances? And perhaps if you put, have you now put steps in place to prevent that from happening? Because just listening to you now, I still think that you have put yourself at a risk again. So could you just perhaps explain that?
Sure, Sergeant. In December, what happened? That's the busiest month because of the Christmas. So we were expecting a delivery and the delivery was coming to the storage. And my, at the time, the duty manager, he didn't realize, and when he got a call from the delivery driver, he didn't realize he left the premises, which is wrong from our side. And he did attend the delivery and he was back to the store in, within 15 to 20 minutes time. So what steps we have taken before that, so that staff, he is not working for us anymore. And after this incident, what we have done, we have done some changes in regards to getting the deliveries. And in future, we, we will not have this type of mistake from our side. So what steps we have taken, first of all, we are very strict on any duty manager is not supposed to leave the premises. So they should be all available throughout the operation. The second steps, what we have done, officer, earlier, we used to get our delivery every alternate days, like for example, Tuesday, then Thursday, Friday. What we have done, we get most of our deliveries on Thursday and Friday so that we will have enough staff and the duty manager has, he, he doesn't have to leave the premises. That's why, that's how we have, we are managing so far.
Thank you. Although I think you've got your circumstances a little bit slightly miscued because it was you that was the duty manager that wasn't on, on premise at that, at that time, so.
It was my staff, yeah, yeah.
Your staff member that was there, wondering what to do. Thank you. Just one other thing now in relation to, because now that I've seen your, your update in relation to promotion of responsible alcohol consumption. Just confirmed though that last year you advertised on your Facebook page in relation to Crate Day and that you were well stocked for crates. Do you think that's appropriate in regards to a promotion of safe, responsible alcohol consumption? If you're saying that you are well stocked with crates for Crate Day? Knowing that the harm that specifically is well known in regards to Crate Day? Just what's your view on that in relation to, to that?
Madam Chair, I think to be fair to the witness, it probably needs to be shown the promotion as well. I know you've raised the issue of promotion and non-alcohol and zero alcohol products, which has been addressed. We're now going into social media or Facebook promotions. I understand the varying views around Crate Day. Radio stations promote it, the police don't like it, but the witness doesn't actually know what precise promotion he's being referred to.
Okay. In terms of the advertising on Facebook and as mentioned earlier in the hearing, there is the opportunity to provide further information if that's wanted. But Sergeant Benj, in terms of the advertising, it was, was there a specific timeframe for that? That you were referring to?
So it was on 30th of November 2021 on their Facebook page in relation to the fact that they had their crates were there and they're all stocked up for Crate Day as pictures of crates of alcohol, beer, et cetera. So I would have thought he would have remembered his promotion for a Crate Day. They don't have that much promotion or anything on their Facebook page in fact. So I thought they would have been able to recall that.
Okay, so Sergeant Benj is saying that he's seen on Facebook page that there isn't a lot of promotional information, but he has seen, observed on, at the end of November of last year, there was a promotion or a message put on Facebook that the bottle store was well stocked for Crate Day. Let me start, Mr Jaggett, and I appreciate if this, this will be a new piece of information and you'll definitely have an opportunity to respond and advertising is, is one of the the criteria that the committee needs to think about. But just getting your initial response, do you accept that there may have been that type of advertising at the end of November of last year? Who is responsible for publishing things on your Facebook page?
I, I'm, I'm responsible for publishing and I do remember that we might have, or we have done promotion, but we haven't put any, any sort of special price or any discounted price. It is just the product photos. And as the officer himself, he said, we are not doing any more promotional activities enough on our Facebook page. So that is one of, one of promotion, what we might have done just before the crates day without the pricing. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Because, yeah, that's that's it, yeah.
Okay, so that answers, I guess, that query Sergeant Benj. And there is the opportunity to provide any further information around that if you deem that necessary. But Sergeant Benj, any other questions?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. In terms of agencies and any questions for the licensing inspector, are there any questions that you would like to ask that's come out of any of the information?
No, my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And somebody from the team at the Medical Officer of Health, is there any questions that the Medical Officer of Health has that arise out of any of the information that is in front of us?
We have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, it seems then that might be cover the information and the questions, inquiries that we all have in relation to the information that has been filed by the applicant. And the further information that has been provided has been really helpful, so thank you for that. I don't think we have anything else we need to cover. I'm just looking around the room here just to make sure of that. So I think that gets us to the end of this morning's hearing. Before we do conclude though, Mr Young, perhaps if I can check with you to see if there's anything further you wanted to add before we conclude. You may wish to be filing a closing submission or not. But is there anything that you wanted to sort of wrap up or respond to?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. No, there's nothing further I have to say and, and understand the reason for the minute and grateful for the indication that the information in the supplementary statement is helpful. So unless we can help you and your, and your fellow members further, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. And did you wish to file a closing submission, Mr Young, at all or?
No, I don't, I don't think so, Chief Palu, unless of course if there was it. In my submissions that I, you now have, I didn't speak to, I talked about wait. I made a submission that you may not agree with. That in fact, if it's, an objection is withdrawn, you must give no weight to it because there's no need to seek leave. However, listen, listening to the question that, questions that you and your members raised, I don't think I need to get into. There's one understanding that this committee is just trying to satisfy itself of certain factors and, and the environment to make its decision. So as long as you're comfortable with no closing submissions, I, I won't make anything further.
Yes, thank you. That assessment's correct, Mr Young. We don't have any evidence from the objectors, they've withdrawn. But there were some matters that we wish to clarify that came out of the paperwork. And I think we've addressed that today. So that I think gets us to the end of today's hearing. So thank you all for participating this morning. It's been useful to see how this goes online and it's been successful, I think. So we will wrap up there and we will conclude this hearing. So to do that physically, all who are online are welcome to hit the off button. And we will now make a decision on the application and we will issue our decision in writing as soon as we can.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members.
Thank you.
Thank you.